Rob Galanakis, thanks for coming back into the shed.
Thanks for having me. This is my first time here.
Bike bus organizer, running for Portland Public School Board. Yes, in any other city, it might seem like a weird concept, but it seems actually pretty natural for Portland right now. You've been riding a bunch of bike buses, right? First of all, I know you're involved with putting together and organizing bike buses more broadly in Portland, not just in your own child's school. But so tell me about the bike buses you've ridden and the overview of this ride every bike bus in Portland thing you're trying to do.
We have about 20 bike buses in Portland. I've helped a couple of schools start ones as sort of promotional activities this year. Each one is different. Each one has its own culture. Each one has its own differences with its routes and some ride greenways and some don't and some ever lent last week and that is really long and you're you're riding on 82nd for a few seconds and then some are entirely on greenways and it's real nice. I get to observe the drop off traffic conditions at each school.
Yeah, I want to get into that later for sure.
That is super interesting. And it's also as a candidate, a way for me to visit schools in a nonpartisan manner. So PTAs as nonprofits need to basically invite everyone in order to invite a single person. And as a PTA president, that's a lot of work and not really something I want to do, especially in the spring. You have everyone wakes up from hibernation when you come back from spring break and it's nonstop work until the end of the year. So I ride, you know, I have my signs on my bike, but it's not a partisan activity and I don't pitch it as such. I pitch it as just a nice thing to do and sort of as part of my bike bus PDX organizing work. And folks were happy to have me. And in some cases, I was at Beverly Cleary this morning and they invited everyone and we had a bunch of candidates come out. I invite all the candidates to ride and I okay that with the school, but it's, we try to make it a nonpartisan thing. Cause I will say it's a little weird to everyone is just vibing so well, getting to school and you know, harassing parents with flyers about voting can be a challenge, but at each school, you get a couple of people that come over and talk to you.
Cool. So, okay, so you, you're, you're involved with the PTA, you're involved with bike buses, you're a parent of kids in PPS. But, but what's sort of the general stump thing around, why are you Rob Galanakis running? I used to say you're also running for zone six, which is most of southeast and a little bit of northeast, right? Or how's that?
I think so. You can vote for all the candidates.
Right, okay.
So I actually don't know exactly what the, what the zone is because it's, if you live in the zone, that's all you need to know.
Gotcha.
And votes come from everywhere.
Okay, so why, why are you running for a seat on the school board?
So I'm gonna not give the stump version of this.
Sure.
Because we have a
Of course.
Sort of an audience that, you know, I know who the audience is here. So in 2021 during COVID, I got on a bike for the first time in like 10 years. I moved to Austin in 2008. I bought a bike. Austin has these huge rolling hills. And I like rolled down the hill and I couldn't get back up. And I walked my bike back up like two miles. That was the last time I rode a bike. It was probably 2008, 2010. I have asthma, my balance isn't great, so I didn't ride a bike. 2021, I was in northeast Portland. I normally would take the bus around. Buses weren't running. A lift was like $45. I said, heck no. So I jumped on a BikeTown e-bike and 2:00 AM in July, I was like a bird, right? It's the best feeling in the world. No one was out. I didn't know where I needed to be. I didn't know where their bike streets were. So I was just riding on Halsey and 60th and no one was around. It's awesome. And it absolutely changed my life. So I started biking the kids to school. Eventually I got a proper cargo bike. You know, upgraded from the rad utility bike to a long tail GSD. And it, everything about my life got better. It, I got healthier, my kids were happier. It was easier to get them around. I enjoyed running errands. Transportation was faster. I wasn't driving a car. I didn't have to worry about parking. I like engaged with my community. I, then I started getting into advocacy. This is sort of the really common path, right? Is you, you ride a bike and suddenly you're running for school board. All the other steps in, in between. This is really just comes out of that first ride on a bike and all the steps of like, why can't I make this better? Why can't I make this better? And especially what we found working on safe routes to school and getting kids to be able to bike is we all, you know, a lot of your listeners and readers understand the problems with P-Bot. We found clearly the problem was really with PPS. And when we start to dig into this, PPS thinks about only what happens on their property at the curb and in the building. And transportation for them is only yellow school buses. PPS is one of the largest landholders. It's one of the largest employers. It's the largest car trip generator in the city. It is this really integral entity. You're never more than a mile or mile and a half from a school, wherever you are in most of Portland. And they're just not interested in how the schools integrate with the rest of the city. So I got into it with this transportation lens, but that I realized it affects health, it affects housing, it affects climate. It affects financial stuff, which I go into extensively on my website, which I think is one of the underappreciated aspects. That's why, that's what got me here.
Yeah, given your, your personal relationship to cycling, it's now even less of a surprise how much your, how much cycling and those things are woven into your campaign. I guess it's sort of like you're hoping to bring the benefits you've had personally to all PPS families essentially. And being, being a part of the school board is a, is a way to do that.
Sort of. There, there are two aspects. One is just bikes are great, right? For some percentage of people, getting on a bike is going to change their life. And I would love for more people to have the social and economic push to do that. The other is bikes solve a whole lot of problems because they're just a really great idea for moving people around American city like Portland is. And there are problems you have where you're like, well, what's a creative solution? We have crumbling infrastructure. Well, what solutions do we realistically have to crumbling street infrastructure? Can't rebuild everything. So how do we orient our transportation system around a solution that'll actually work? We have similar problems at PPS. Well, we have children who, you know, we're not, we're not doing well. We're not teaching our kids well. Well, what are the options? I'd love to reduce class sizes. We don't have the money to reduce class sizes. We need creative solutions to things that we can actually execute that don't require five years of study and 10 years of implementation. Things where we could be like, hey, this is a problem. Do we have money to fix this? No. What creative levers do we have that we have levers we haven't looked at or we've under prioritized or only given lip service to? How do we pull those levers?
Yeah. And that, that answer to me or that statement to me sounds like somebody, and this gives me a chance to quickly mention sort of what your background is beyond being a dad and a bike bus leader. Your, your professional background is like as entrepreneur, software coder, small business owner, right? So is there anything you want to say about that in terms of how that informs the way you look at things? When you were just saying, you know, we can do things more boldly and without a, I mean, that, that to me sounds like the, the business owner coming into the governmental entity and saying, hey, why can't we do things differently? Is that kind of how, how you see things?
No, I don't. And there's a huge difference for me between the private world and the public world. In the private world, you can do a thing and fail. And I've failed at multiple businesses in my life and that's okay. We only have one public school system. Public school system can't fail. We can't let it fail. And if it does, my, my brother's family lives in Philadelphia. And this, the city, the school system is like 98% black because the white parents who can afford it opt out. And now you have a fail, I don't want to use failed system because I don't know it so well, but it's a system that's really hard to get back off the ground. Once you allow the school system to tatter to pieces, you can't fix it. It's really, really challenging to fix. We cannot let our public institutions fail. And the private industry startup mentality, I think is, is actually really dangerous to take into public institutions. And I've seen this when I've started to work at nonprofits as well. So I would say that the thing I bring from it is resourcefulness. You know, grant funding and business funding are very different. As a business owner, you know this. But when you're working in a public institution, it's like, here's the budget. What are we going to do for it? Whereas when you're running a business, it's what do we need to do and what budget do we need to do it? And where you approach, I would say maybe the, the budgeting aspect and prioritization aspect as a business owner, I think you get better results. But I would say the, let's be creative and startup type of thing. I actually caution people very heavily. It's one of the reasons I don't bring up my, my background that much.
I hear what you're saying. And I'll let folks know, we're not going to get into it a ton, probably in this conversation today. But Rob has talked extensively about the budgeting and funding issues around PPS. There's a whole page on your website, I noticed, around the bond measure coming up in May, which is very extensive and gives people a really good window into how you see bonding and its pros and cons and what kind of bond that you should go for and why you support the current bond coming up. But I want folks to know that you're not just, while I say, I mean, this is one of the most like bike oriented or transit, transportation oriented platforms I've seen from any elected leader for any office. But it's not just saying, you don't just reply and say, yeah, bikes, you know? So I wanted to let you detail maybe one of them, which I thought was pretty intriguing. The idea of school choice has always been tricky for me to kind of come down on because I can appreciate that a parent would want to give their kid the best chance. And if you have a bad situation, you need to be able to change. But the transportation reform activist in me, that drives me crazy because I know so many people and it's obviously a huge issue that, that also means that our trip times become beyond the scope of a bike or a bus or walking. And so people are driving and as you said, and you say on your website, PPS generates like one out of every three trips on the road during drop up, you know, peak hours. So you're, 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 the way you're looking at the school choice issue wasn't to say, don't have school choice so that people can live closer and sort of be forced to bike and walk. What was, what was the solution that you brought up that you thought was pretty novel around schools?
So right now, if you are in a catchment zone, a neighborhood school, and you don't like the neighborhood school, you don't have it, you have a few options. One is to try to lottery in to a focus option school or a dual language immersion school. That's fine. PPS runs a fair lottery. The problem is lotteries are inherently unfair. It's if you look at the demographic makeup of dual language immersion lottery schools, it takes a lot of effort. The, you need to get in, you need to know what's there, you need to visit the school. It takes a lot of effort that families who are struggling, who need the most help are less, are least likely to take advantage of. So this sounds like sort of a nice thing that PPS offers as an equity aspect. It's actually inequitable because what it does is it allows more affluent parents to opt out of their neighborhood schools. And we know the number one thing beyond class sizes, anything else is the socioeconomic status of the school is what drives the results of the school. You can look at PPS's budgeting. PPS lays out a pretty clear budget. And you could look at the per school performance and basically it's directly correlated with the affluence of the school's community. And not funding, but affluence of the school community. So, well, what else can we do? Well, if you are low income, you're less likely to live in your Alameda's, your Housford Abernathy, your Mount Tabor areas. And in fact, in a lot of these areas, the only place you can afford to live is an apartment on a dangerous, dirty arterial where your kids are more likely to have asthma. They're more likely to have traffic injuries. They're less likely to have a place to be outside. So you're like, well, I could live here with a higher quality of life, or I could move my family into an apartment that's in the armpit between Gleason, 60th and 84. Those are your, those are your two options. What are you going to do? Well, what we really should have is broad up zoning across the inner east side. So we can build family sized apartments to allow these families to move because they, they may not want to stay where they are. But they probably don't want to live in a, in one of these apartments. Why can't they live on an apartment on Lincoln? Lincoln and Harrison Greenway could have apartments, not just Division or Hawthorne or Gleason or Burnside. So that it's things like this. And then you get, we have falling enrollment across the district. We need more families moving here. Our enrollment loss is much greater than surrounding districts. So all these things are connected. So we can't just think of housing as a thing that happens to us. It has to be a thing PPS actively advocates for.
And that's one of your central critiques of PPS at the moment is that they're just in this bubble. They're in their own silo, thinking about education policy and test scores.
And school funding.
Yeah. And the, the, the environment at the campus between, you know, the office and the chain link fence that they put up around the playground, but nothing else. And so like why aren't, why wouldn't they advocate for housing or something like that? And you're, you're saying that PPS should take a more integrated role with like City of Portland and other entities, right? That's kind of one of your main platforms. I want to go back to the bike bus a little bit, just as an example of something that arose. Well, I won't, I won't say completely separate from PPS. It wasn't frowned upon. I mean, one of the people who really got it started in Portland, Sam Balto was a PPS teacher at the time. So I'm assuming, I don't know the details, but I'm assuming they at least allowed him, allowed him to do it and gave him a green light and, and they weren't obviously saying no. But they also, like when they hired a safe routes to school person for the first time a couple of years ago, I think folks like you or me were really excited. Come to find out, they don't really care about what happens in the streets outside the school. I mean, they do, obviously they have hearts, they're human beings. But in terms of a policy and a capacity situation, they're not going to go waste, or they're not going to go spend capital politically or even monetarily on something that isn't on the school grounds. Like, do you just see that as like a fundamentally flawed way of looking at it? Or, or how would you on the school board bend them a little bit more so that they can take a more active role in promoting safe streets beyond their front porch?
I would say it's only a flawed way of looking at it if our goals differ. And one of the things that became clear when advocates are working on bike bus bill is PPS's goal was really had nothing to do with transportation and their, their climate crisis response plan is totally toothless and unrealistic, especially around transportation. I think it's flawed because I care about kids being healthy and families getting to school happy and having transportation options and saving money and having sane start times or start times are also driven by buses. But the, there were institutional forces that pushed back against stuff like the, like the bike bus bill and it was severely compromised.
Like, like school bus drivers not being comfortable that it might supplant some of their drivers and sort of labor issues. Yeah, right.
Yeah. So it's, they just don't care. It's not, they're not being judged on it. They're, no one's evaluating on it. No one's halting them accountable for it. So why, there's no institutional incentive for them to care. And one of the things that pushed me to run for the board and not just advocate was that we had meetings with folks there at, at PPS and administration. And they put us through all these hoops about how to get them to care. And I said, what if the, but what hap, like, let's say nothing, it doesn't go anywhere. What happens? And they're like, well, ultimately there's nothing you can do, right? It has to be, it has to come from the board. If the board doesn't care, nothing's going to get done. And I said, well, why, why have we been wasting our time talking to you? What we need to be doing then is affecting political change. So that's really what it comes down to is, is getting folks on the board. Whether it's me and I've been inviting all the other candidates, like I mentioned to bike buses, to try to get them involved to see how transportation fits into things. And I mentioned school start times because even if you don't like bikes or don't like kids or whatever, whoever you are, you probably want your kid to have a better start time. My elementary schooler, 7:55 and my middle schoolers, 9:15.
Yeah. Explain to me how that's related to the bus. I've heard you mention that, but I didn't know that. That was kind of interesting.
So there used to be a distribution of start times. We had elementary schools at eight or 8:45 and K through eights were different times. And, and I think maybe the high schools have been unified for a while. And the middle schools were different times. But for this school year, in order to save a few million dollars on transportation, this school board aligned the start times. So basically the buses roll through to the elementary schools and then they all go directly to the middle schools. It used to be harder to route. It used to, I think, require more drivers. Now they've saved a few million dollars, which is fine. Like it's really hard to cut a budget where you've already been cutting it for a while. But that should have been the start of a discussion about, hey, we now have created tardiness, chronic tardiness problems at schools that we didn't have before. I'm not actually sure in the end, this was a financially, it saved money with the negative impacts of the, the school's start time change. But I understand why they did it, but it should have been the start of a discussion about how do we give school, how do we create more flexibility with start times?
Yeah, okay. I don't, I don't want to, I don't want you to get out of this interview without addressing pickup and drop off lines. How do we fix those? Those are so frustrating. Every, I think it's one of those issues that just crosses every interest, right? Like everybody is going to understand that. So like, maybe that's one way too. You can reach more people is like, what would you, what would you do on the school board? Start talking to your colleagues if you're on the school board and say, you know, how do we actually address drop off and pickup? Which is a nightmare in so many schools.
So it turns out that it's not that hard. This is one of these things where we know what the solution is. It just requires the political, not even will, but political infrastructure to do it. So the process is you get Portland Bureau of Transportation, Safe Routes to School to look at what's going on. And they have all these ideas when they talk to you and then you get an official report, which contains none of those ideas. And you get maybe a sign attached to an existing pole or they ask for some vegetation trimming or sign cleaning. I've yet to talk to someone who has had a positive experience with traffic circulation at Safe Routes. And it's not because they don't know what the solution is. It's because they don't want to. Really they can't push the principals in the schools to do a certain thing. The principal is certainly not an expert in like traffic management and traffic flow and transportation. And there's no interest at higher than the principal, right? One of the most burnt out I've ever been is dealing with my principal's boss. It was a really awful experience. And ultimately he told me verbatim, PBS, PBS policy will not accept reduction of parking near schools and PBS will not accept any restriction of driver access to school frontage. And then I tried to get that in writing because he told me this was policy and he said, oh no, that, that's not what I said. But that's, that's what you're dealing with, right? And, and at some point you as an advocate are just like, I can't forget it. There are other battles I have to fight. So all this really takes is the school board creating a policy to expand school frontage, right? It's the same with any streets. You can't, you create a system that's based on like rivers and tributaries and flooding. And it's the same with our highways, right? You put cars on and they all funnel towards one place. You cannot avoid congestion. Where you have these focal points, like one street in front of the one entrance, you are going to get massive congestion. So that's why we have it at my school. So one of the cool things about visiting the schools, like Chapman doesn't have that problem. Chapman has a giant frontage.
Which is in northwest, right?
Northwest. And there's no like drop off in front of the school or at least that I saw. So you don't get the same congestion because it's spread over larger areas. So this is one of the things with school streets, folks have talked about, and I think it's had articles on your website. I feel like there's some unrealistic things advocates talk about because, you know, we point to like London and Paris, two of the most dense places in the Western world. And we don't have that problem, but we do need to look at how do we pedestrianize streets to enlarge the school frontage? So you can drop your kids off. So the, each school is different and each school requires a different implementation of this concept. But the concept is the same everywhere in schools that have a door next to a street and that's their only entrance are the worst. In schools that have a door not next to a street, parents somehow manage to, you know, they figure out how to get their kids there safely as well.
Yeah.
So that's the solution.
You're saying like disperse the amount of like, okay, I got you, I got you on that. That makes sense. It sounds like, from what you said before, with one of your other statements about, you know, they're, they don't feel like they're being held to task for any of these metrics outside the school. Like for instance, I think what you're saying is if schools were held to some sort of performance metric around, you know, well, mode split for one or health of the students outside, anything like that, like they are for standardized testing. They may have some incentive to, to change, but I feel like that, that may be one thing that would be one of your biggest tasks is getting them to feel like they have incentive outside, some lever, some, some, some stick to, to actually make one of these changes. Cause I've had some of the similar experiences you've had as, as someone and heard stories about people trying to do things around bike stuff on campus. Like for instance, putting, citing school racks, you know, four or five P-Bot standard staple racks. And they just, it's like impossible to find a spot and nothing is quite right. It's in the place where people drop their kids off or it's too dangerous. Or in my local school here where my three kids have gone, they ended up putting the bike parking way in the back of the school behind a locked fence. And I'm like, just put it in the front. You've got all this grass. So is that, that's what you're saying, right? Is that the way to maybe start shifting that is to create some more sticks and incentives where they're, they're held accountable for things like how many kids are biking to school and all those sort of things.
I would not do it that way or suggest doing it that way. So if, you know, you mentioned like test scores. So we're already not doing our core competency well. And the sticks and carrots around that core competency are also not working.
True.
And it's part of this comes out of experience in the private industry as well. This idea that, oh, you can, you know, have reviews and hold people accountable in this ways.
Like it won't work is what you're saying. It just won't work. Yeah.
The thing you need to do is provide people their resources and support to do their best work. And very rarely people can't do that and they can be moved elsewhere or out and that happens. But in general, everyone's there because they're, they're trying their best and want to do their best work. And, and in certain cases in our classrooms, we're not giving them the resources. In, in our streets, we're, we're not giving them the environment and the training. We're putting, we're making principals in charge of traffic circulation decisions without giving them any, any like information or support. And then who, depending on who their boss is, you know, those conversations I had with my principal would start super positive. And then they would veer slowly over time. And I realized it's because each time she would talk to her boss and her boss was totally against it. And this is not a way, it really requires the administration, the board and the administration to say, this is an integral part of our kids' education. We don't need to put metrics into place and all this stuff. We just need you to see that and we need you to work with advocates and people who understand what's going on at the schools or even P-Bot to put these solutions into place that, and in this case, we know what the solution is. It's expand school frontage. It's much harder to like, what's the solution to how we teach our kids math and algebra and reading and deal with kids with special needs? I don't know, man. That's really hard. That's way above my pay. It's weird for a school board member to say, but I'm, I'm not going to shy away from it. Like that's why we have, I don't think the core competencies of board members need to overlap. At least for all seven, eight members need to overlap with the, you know, what our administration is supposed to be experts in.
Yeah, it sounds like what you're saying is you, you're not going to make a series of, of metrics and, you know, whatever known performance indicators. To use like a government term and say, you must meet these because like you said, they're already there now and they're not meeting them and they'll just come up with some reason. So correct me if I'm wrong, but you're basically saying like, your goal, if you had, you know, if you're able to achieve it would be just change, to be able to change the culture, to raise the level of, of, of knowledge and understanding that these issues are important. And then eventually that will sort of start to pervade the policymaking.
We're in such, the fruit is so low hanging, it's almost on the floor.
When it comes to what these outside school, like bike racks. Yeah, yeah.
Just say we're putting in bike racks and we're putting them near the front of the school and that's it.
I should say that PPS has a lot of schools, a lot of great bike racks right in front of the school. Don't get me wrong.
But what happens at these schools is it goes through facilities and it goes through all these people who have the kids' interests at heart. They just don't know how to manifest it. And it turns into a counterproductive result with a process that is a total slog. We don't, you, visiting these schools and talking to parents, it took one school, like two years to get a Gaga ball court put in. And eventually they had a parent contractor who supervised the Girl Scouts. Like that's unacceptable. This is a cultural thing. Just we, we don't have the capacity to tell people no on the stuff they want to do. If you want to make your school and community better, whether it's putting in bike racks or Gaga ball court or painting a mural or starting a bike bus. Say, here's how we can help you, or if we can't help you, we're going to say, good luck. Do it and come back to us and, and tell us how it goes in six months.
I was struck with how similar that line of thinking is with how I'm hearing some folks that are in our circles, talk about how they'd like P-Bot to respond to the community, especially right now, right? With try to be more empowering of community groups in terms of doing, whether it's just, you know, small traffic calming projects or whatever. So there's definitely some similarities toward these two agencies, just in terms of trying to get them to be more responsible, what people need right now. And react to this really urgent pressing, which you call an existential crisis on your website of not having enough money to do their job and getting to where we're getting pretty dangerous into some crises that may be difficult to, to, to get out of. I wanted to ask about, you know, school board meetings have become really contentious, obviously over the years for various reasons. I wonder if, I can already see some parents, if you're in there, you know, railing against you as some sort of social engineering leftist who doesn't understand that not everybody can bike and blah, blah, blah. I'm just wondering, you know, if you've put much thought into how you would respond to somebody that was to come at you with that kind of concern, saying that, hey, you know, you want everybody to bike? That's not possible. Sorry, like we're not doing that. Like, how would you respond to that?
It's not hypothetical. You, you won't be shocked to know it's come up in endorsement interviews or endorsement discussions. It's a, someone called me a bike nut, which was fun.
A bike, what, sorry, they call it?
A bike nut.
Oh my gosh. Okay, okay, okay. So yeah.
So not everyone can bike. Yep. What we're doing is better allocating resources. So if the people that can bike don't, it's a more expensive mode of transportation. The students need more interventions, they need more support. They're going to do better. The school is going to require more funding because the scores won't be as high as they could be. All these things take resources away from the students that really need them and the communities that really need them. Not everywhere is going to have a bike bus. Not everywhere is going to have bike education. Not every student can ride. But a heck of a more, many more can do it than currently do it. And this is always a discussion we have. Bikes is most of the And this is always a discussion we have, bikes is, most of the can, most of the people I see in cars are not like, uh, don't have mobility problems. They're, they're just there because it's convenient. My wife took the car on errands today. We just got her a new HSD yesterday. I've been working on it for years, but you know, she's getting used to it and, and she'll, she'll ride it more because she gets that encouragement. For me, but for most of our trips, our trips out of pure convenience. And so the, the concern and criticism, I think is, is totally valid and fair. But we're a while away from hitting the point where we're talking about forcing people out of car, you know, repossessing cars or social engineering stuff. What we're doing is putting, uh, helping people make economically rational decisions by, uh, these costs that are externalized. Like your choice to drive to school imposes time costs on everyone else that you don't pay. You only pay a marginal aspect of that. And, and obviously we know that about road wear and tear and all this stuff. We just need to put the environments, the, the systems into place that internalize these externalized costs. The same way for the rest of our transportation system. Why we have failing streets is the same reason we have, uh, congested drop off. We are, the costs around driving in particular are so externalized. And schools are part of internalizing those costs. That's not social engineering. Social engineering is everyone else paying to subsidize your choices.
Which sounds familiar and that is what, I mean, a way to flip that around, right? Is somebody who says that to you is actually, there's also an argument to make that the over reliance on driving, the sort of what I call driving abuse sometimes where people are doing it more than they need to, and it's becoming a problem, um, actually does take away that, the option of maybe someone who would have to take transit because they can't bike or, or can't afford a car, but they can't take transit because the service is so bad. Because, right, we're not prioritizing spending on bus service. A lot of the money's going toward roads and stuff like that, that people are driving on. So I guess that's another way to, to flip it around. Yeah, I definitely, I definitely hear you on that. And I'm glad that you've already got that, that question because you're going to need practice answering that. Regardless of what happens with the school board race or any other race that you're in. It's always going to be something you're faced with.
Remember that parents, only 15% of households in districts two, three, and four, which is what makes that most of PBS, have kids in PPS, 15% of households. The population's higher because those households have more people. But it's a minority and you're not elected by parents. You're elected by all the voters in the areas PPS serves. And this is one of the, the issues, I think, with, uh, the school board, especially folks that come out of running for the school board because they attend school board meetings, is your world becomes that. No one go, you, you don't get normal people showing up to school board meetings to talk about normal stuff. It's only folks, it's only parents and it's only folks in the, you know, education advocacy community. And I think this is one of the reasons the school board will, and PBS will send you constant messages about advocating for school funding. But they're not going to send you messages when ODOT bonds against a billion dollars of general fund revenue that could go to schools. They bond against it for, for the IFI bridge and PBS doesn't say anything because what is PBS care? Parents aren't showing up to yell at the school board about that.
Yeah, I think that's one of the strongest parts of your campaign and what you're trying to elevate is this one city idea, which is like your, sort of your, your slogan for, for, right? It's, you're saying, I like how you're trying to say that more people should. It's also a smart way to, to broaden your voting pool, right? Like you said, beyond just education interested people by saying that the quality of the schools is really dependent on the quality of the city and vice versa. We can't have a good city without, without good schools and, and the other way around. So is there any other part of that one city thing that, that you want to speak to about how, how folks without kids in school or people that aren't involved in education advocacy, why they should care about like the central part of your campaign, which is saying, get schools, get people to understand that the schools themselves have a larger imprint on how we experience the city, no matter how we, you know, experience the city.
Yeah, so I think for folks listening to this, uh, especially the PBS is probably one of the major impediments towards, uh, improving our greenway network in particular. Large number, maybe the majority of our elementary and middle schools are on greenways. And PBS will not restrict, they will not interfere with PPS, with access to PPS properties for drivers. So this means we can't have motor filters, we can't have diverters. We may not even be able to have speed bumps. PBS won't, uh, P-Bot won't mess with that. And if we continue on business as usual, you know, this, this is coming up with some of the, uh, bike bus PDX stuff we're doing to city council to try to get P-Bot to commit to a 500, uh, average daily traffic volume on greenways with bike bus routes. Those bike bus routes won't, the, any diversion they had for 580DT, I can assure you will not be near a school. It'll be on bike bus routes, the portions of the bike bus route away from the school. So if you want a connected greenway network, one of the best things you can do is get the school board interested in getting more families walking and biking. I'll also mention, we have this new energy around our greenway network because of bike buses, because it's politically really hard to argue against kids getting to school safely. It's really much easier to argue against entitled bike riders, you know, single people commuting downtown. Uh, or, you know, on their Petal Palooza rides with their weird costumes and their butts hanging out. It's a lot harder to be like, hey, my kid just wants to be able to ride his bike like you probably did growing up, but my kid can't because it's not safe anymore. So making sure, uh, folks in the safe route space and families advocating for this at PPS are supported and their voice is elevated, uh, gives us a really powerful tool in the, uh, in the battle to get safe, safe connected bike network in Portland.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Appreciate you drawing that connection. I think that is sort of one of the things that, uh, well, the bike bus growth in Portland is now, I'm happy to say, created someone running for local office. So that's, that's really exciting. And I'm, and I'm, and I'm glad that you're doing it because I think these are really important issues to elevate. So, uh, is there anything else that you want to share before we wrap things up? Website or anything like that? How do people read more about?
So, uh, robgforpps.com is the website. There's, uh, there's a lot on there. I would say it's an electoral liability, but I believe it's really important for folks to know who they're voting for, uh, not just from a principal's aspect, but to say, here, here are the policies that I would implement and support if I were on the board. There's a lot on there. There's maybe some stuff if you're interested in, uh, how like, how measure five and 50 actually impact school funding or the kicker impact school funding and some of the ways to reform it or, uh, finances. And like Jonathan mentioned, there's a, a huge, uh, article about the bond that I think is worth reading. But, uh, definitely check it out, skim it over. And if there's any areas that are interested, uh, there, there's a lot there.
Well, Rob, thanks for, uh, thanks so much for coming over and sharing this with us.
Thank you so much for having me.
And luck on the campaign.